A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Help us if you will spell your name for us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under the third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda from that date nor plan for future agenda. This is not an open-mic night. Teresa, call the first item, please.
Certainly. First, I'll call public hearing consent agenda, items one through fourteen.
Anyone who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items two through six and eleven through thirteen were introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
By Trent. Discussion. Call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call items fifteen and sixteen together. They are the application of East Park Cinema for a Class I liquor license at two twenty North Sixty-Sixth Street and the related manager application of Lisa Freida. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, Tim.
Tim O'Neill, and I represent Nebraska Entertainment, East Park Cinema, which is the Marcus Corporation, and pleased to report another significant investment by Marcus and the community, together with landlord, over two point six million investment in exterior and interior improvements, including adding new Dreamliner lounges to recliners to all theaters. There'll be a new concession area, new signs, new exterior, new lobby, new bathrooms, basically a new theater. And part of the concession expansion will include a liquor offering similar to the Grand, except there will not be a lounge at this facility. Be the same responsible service of alcohol that we've seen at the Grand, and I'd ask if there are any questions you have?
Any questions? Carl.
Yes. Mr. O'Neill, how long ago was it? Almost a year ago, the Grand?
Yeah, I think that's correct.
And can you tell us a little bit about the experience that Marcus has had with the Grand since that transformation in terms of alcohol issues?
There really haven't been any issues. Obviously, there's been a transition of the different types of service they've offered because of the different food and other amenities. You know, liquor is really a small part of the theater operations. It's an amenity, but it's really not a major part of their sales, so there really hasn't been a big event as a result of the liquor, to be honest with you. We just haven't had any incidents, and it's been just a complimentary service that they've offered to adults, and we haven't had any incidents.
Good, thank you. When's your expected reopening?
Middle of May.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call item seventeen. Manager application of David Hotevy for Wadsworth Old Chicago, Inc., doing business as Old Chicago at twenty-nine eighteen Pine Lake Road. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's David Hotevy, H-O-T-O-V-Y. I live at forty-two forty-four Washington Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh six. I'm here on behalf of Old Chicago, renewal of the manager to be on the liquor license. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any for you.
Questions? It says here that you were scheduled to take the manager training. Did you take that?
Yes, sir, the responsible hospitality. It was taken on about two weeks ago.
Okay, got it, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items eighteen and nineteen. They're the application of Leaf and Hops for a Class C liquor license at thirteen thirty-two P Street and the related manager application of Marco Serrano. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Krieger, C-R-E-A-G-E-R. I'm an attorney. I represent Serrano Brothers LLC, who has the liquor license application pending. Present is Stefan Serrano, who's the interested party in the LLC, and Marco Serrano, who is brother, that's where the Serrano Brothers comes from, who will be the manager. The Serrano Brothers have a facility in Omaha that's a tobacco store. They're licensed by the, they have a tobacco license and a regulated industry and done quite well. They'd like to venture down to Lincoln and work in the P Street area with the development down there to open a restaurant that serves alcohol. Original plans had to do with perhaps a cigar bar, but the law got kind of garbled up, and so their plan is to incorporate dinner, alcohol, and maybe vapors. That's the Hops, Leaf and Hops part, although there's no tobacco obviously going to be there. They're excited about the opportunity to invest in the redevelopment of the P Street area, and unless there are any questions about the application, I'll submit it.
Questions? Carl.
Thank you. What, tell us about the food part of it.
Well, Stefan, would you like to come up and tell them what your food plans are?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're really excited about our food. We spoke to a number of bars and restaurant owners, and we have a combination of panini style sandwiches, four of those, as well as four flatbreads to begin with, and it's mostly American influence, but it also combines different nuances and influences from other parts of the world, particularly the Mediterranean era, area. In addition to those, we have a few appetizers on top of the menu and two desserts, so.
And do you anticipate you'll be open lunch and dinner? Is that, that?
No. To begin, Marco and I would like to be present for all shifts. We don't yet have a trained management staff, and for that reason, we have restricted our operational hours, so we'll be open at four P M. and then closing at ten P M. Tuesday through Wednesday, and then Thursday through Saturday. We'll be open from four P M. until midnight, and then we'll be closed on Sunday and Monday. And again, this is just to allow Marco and myself to be present during the course of the operational hours.
Any other questions?
Welcome to Lincoln.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please. I'm sorry, anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call item twenty. Application of Night Owl Pub to expand its Class C liquor license by the addition to the area of a new licensed area described as an outdoor area approximately twenty feet by fifty-one feet located at thirty-two thirty-three and a half South Thirteenth Street.
Anybody here to speak to this item? Please come forward.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
There's a microphone there, sir. You can sign the card right there if you'd like to. Want to tell us a little bit about what you have?
We are extending our liquor license out in our smoking garden to accompany more people. It's kind of a smaller enclosure, and you get a lot of people in there, and there's not room to walk around, and it also helps get the smoke away from the entrance to the door. The part we're expanding is approximately nineteen by twenty feet. We're going to add more games over here, another ping pong table, bean bag toss, kind of get people outside more than being inside all day. Starting to get spring, summer out, people are going to be nice, and the weather's going to be going well.
And what's your name?
My name is Brennan Rutt, R-U-T-T, fifty-four twenty-seven Sherman Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh six.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Rutt, as you're looking at, it's a downs, it's underneath the top floor of the main level, so it's a split level kind of thing. Underneath, it's open. There's the trash bins down there. Is this including that trash bin area, or?
Where additional nineteen feet is going, or twenty feet is going that way, which goes to the pillar, the next pillar over, and then it's about another fifteen probably approximately feet to the alley, which the trash bin is right by the alley.
Right.
So there's a good significant space between, and there are still two parking spots that won't be used, that people will still be able to park, so the parking is not being bothered at all.
Okay, you could be having music out there as well?
There is music, yep. There already is music currently, and it doesn't, we don't play it loud. We have the, yeah, we have the apartments next to us that never have yet to complain in the year that we've been there, so.
Okay. One other thing, I know that you were before us some time ago to get your original liquor license, and there were some restrictions on that, I believe, that were put on at the State Liquor Commission. Any problems since?
We've had a little hiccup. It got resolved. We went to the state council, and they didn't take our liquor license, and they added another, I think it was another year to the liquor license to that.
To the restrictions.
To the restriction. It was, we had a fully staffed bar. We were there doing a Halloween thing, and it was just a mess up that we had. We didn't think it was going to bother the liquor license because we weren't staffed, or we were staffed, we weren't on staff. It was a mistake on our part, and we corrected it, and it will never happen again.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next, I'll call items twenty-one and twenty-two. They are the application of Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery for S D Ls to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately ten feet by ten feet at Canopy Street and Q Street on May ninth, May twenty-third, and May thirtieth, from eight A M. to twelve P M. This would be during the Haymarket Farmers Market. And then, again, at ten by ten feet at fifty-five hundred Old Chaney Road on April twenty-sixth, May third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first, from ten A M. to two P M. During the Old Chaney Farmers Market. No oath on S D Ls.
No.
Just give your name and address.
Tim Merman, fifty-three ten South Thirty-seventh, the manager at Glacial Till Vineyard and Winery. We're just asking for a special designated liquor license to allow samples at the farmers' markets as well as bottle sales. We don't do any glasses of wine. Everything, you know, remains closed at the farmers' markets and just wine sales to go, and then also promoting our events in our tasting room and the Vineyard and Winery, as well as the Nebraska wine and grape growers industry through the passport program.
John.
It was Berman was your last name?
Merman, yes.
Merman, excuse me.
Yep.
Thank you. So basically, the ten by ten is one of the farmers' market.
Yep, that's our booth, so we have people come up. If they do want a sample, we serve one ounce samples in little plastic cups, so they must sample at our booth, you know, where we'll check I D.s and all the necessary things that we're required to do, and they can sample if they like. If not, you know, we just promote ourselves and do offer samples if people are willing to try.
Now, with your application, as of course it's gone through the police department, were there any comments about the fact you don't have a barrier of any kind, or just to make sure you're?
We do our ten foot by ten foot fence, you know, it's enclosed on three sides, so essentially they come into our booth and sample within our ten by ten, and we don't, again, we don't do any glasses of wine or bottle sales. It can be open there, so nobody's really drinking other than the five samples that are allowed for the one ounce samples, which are free.
And out of curiosity, has anyone ever done anything like this at the farmers' market before?
We've been doing them in Omaha for about three years. We've done Lincoln, that Old Chaney, for the last three as well, and then this is the first year that we're doing the one downtown, so. We were here last year, and you'll probably see me again, we'll be, you know, we're regular vendors at Old Chaney, and then we'll be going off and on downtown in Lincoln as well, so.
So you've got the Old Chaney, you've got Old Chaney on here, so is that going to cover you for the year then, or the season?
No, not yet. I usually do them about a month at a time in advance, just in case if we're not going to have people to staff them, so. And again, everybody that we do have staffed has taken all the wired beverage training services and hold the manager position for the state as well, the R B S T.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this art, this item? Staff questions?
Can I have Joyce Siddick come forward just for a minute? I know she's standing in for our regular investigator, but just while you're coming up here, just curious, any observations on what's happened at Old Chaney and moving to the downtown farmers' market, or everything worked out fine over the years?
This is probably at least the third year we've done them at Old Chaney, and we haven't had any problems reported. This is the first year L H D C has opened it up for alcohol, and they went out to do different wineries so far that have applied, so you'll have another one coming forward in a couple of weeks.
We haven't had any reports of violations with the Old Chaney Market, so obviously, as they move into more heavily concentrated farmers' markets, you know, the officers are down there anyway and walking around, so we'll ask them to make sure everything's, you know, being followed.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'm not trying to block it.
Mr. Chair, I don't think there's anyone testifying, so I'd move approval of all items from?
I'd ask you to.
Let Marcus out, please.
Oh, okay.
Let's just go individually.
Okay, we'll go individually on these. I would first move items fifteen and sixteen, approval.
Second.
Again, I would ask you to.
Don't those go together?
They don't have to be.
Oh, okay, I'll do item fifteen, approval. Sorry about that.
Second. Second by Roy. Discussion? If there is any, I will. I voted against this when Marcus put their, first one in downtown. I'm still opposed to it. I want to say that's not a repudiation of Marcus, however, they've done an excellent job. It's what I hear from people who are concerned that they're still would like to have someplace they can take the family and not have to worry about there being alcohol there. That is not, absolutely not a repudiation of Marcus. They're doing what they need, they feel they need to do, and they've done a good job of making sure that we don't have problems. I just would like to represent those who think they'd still like to take their family to a theater and not have to worry about alcohol, so I vote against. Call a roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
No.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to one.
And I'd move approval of item sixteen.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion? Call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'd move approval of item seventeen.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion? Call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Would it please, my colleagues, do eighteen and nineteen together?
I'm fine with that.
I'll move items eighteen and nineteen together, please.
Second.
Second by Roy?
Trent.
I'm sorry, Trent. Discussion? Call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'd move item twenty, be approved.
Can I have a comment? Second, so we can get to the comment period.
Roy? Second by Trent, I'm sorry.
I am a, have a business as a neighbor to this Night Owl Pub, and I know that when they came to us the first time, we denied them, and they went to the state and received their liquor license with some restrictions, and I can say that they have been good neighbors, and the only thing I was aware of was what they mentioned was a little hiccup on Halloween last year, but they have been good neighbors to my business, so I'm going to vote yes.
Well, I'm not sure what a little hiccup means, but I know that we were pretty adamant a year ago when we said we needed you to stay on the straight and narrow. It sounds like we're, we're close, so you know how important it is. Okay, so, call a roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And I'd move approval of items twenty-one and twenty-two.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion? Call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, is our public hearing resolutions. We have one item. Item twenty-three is approving the award of contract to the low bidder for the agreement between the City and State Department of Roads for the Seventieth Street Van Dorn to East Borough project.
Good afternoon, I'm Thomas Schaefer with the Public Works and Utilities Department. Much like you did on Fifty-Sixth Street earlier this year, this is approving the award of that contract that was taken bids on recently for pavement repairs on Seventieth Street.
Okay, discussion? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, we'll go onto our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item twenty-four, vacation one four zero one zero, vacating the east-west alley between O Street and N Street from the west line of Twenty-Third Street to the east line of the Antelope Creek Channel.
Bill Medina with Catholic Social Services. I'm the director of finance there. Saint Joseph Institute, the applicant is the owner of our real estate, but we're sister corporations together. Our request is to vacate the alley between Twenty-Third Street and the Antelope Creek Parkway. We're very pleased with our location down there. We're able to both serve the poor that live in that vicinity, the needy families, but it's also very comfortable for our donors and our patrons of our thrift store to come also. The alley has, is almost like a driveway to us. We do have some traffic right out the front door. We did put some speed bumps in there to try to slow down traffic going across over to the back of our thrift store here, but it's worked very well for us, and we're requesting a vacation of that alley.
Larry.
I noticed that at the planning commission, you had some questions about the easement. Do you feel that that's been satisfactorily resolved?
Certainly, yes, it has.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to discuss this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next would be item twenty-five, text amendment one five zero zero two, amending section twenty-seven sixty-three point two hundred of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to clubs to delete the setback requirement and repealing section twenty-seven point sixty-three point two hundred of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Good afternoon, Tim Gergen with the Clark Anderson Partners. It is one of our projects that this text amendment is slated for. This has to do with the Germans from Russia Museum down on C Street. This is an expansion to the museum. This dark line indicates the expansion to the museum. What happened is the museum got a donation from a family in California, a large donation of books. The donation came with a stipulation that it could not be stored or housed in the basement, which is where the library is at in this museum. They are going forward with an addition to the building to have a library and a community room added to it. Thus, we needed a text amendment to allow us to build within that side yard setback of this development, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yes.
Carl.
Tim, what's, what's the existing footprint of the building? Can you kind of outline that?
The existing footprint is just right here, and the bold is the proposed.
Great.
So the architecture of that, we met with the neighbors, and they were concerned about the height, and we were going to keep the same building height and the same architectural facade of that building as well. So as you can see, this is the new building addition over here. Here's the front view, and then here's the footprint of that building on the site.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Larry in?
I was hoping Steve could come up.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department.
Steve, this will amend the code, and the original language has some provisions for clubs that abut residential areas like this one does about the height of the building, and while it doesn't seem to be an issue at all with the Germans from Russia Museum, it's a one-story building. Can you speak to what trade-offs, if any, we're making for the rest of the city or other clubs that abut residential areas by making this overall text amendment change?
Sure. The part of the text that's being eliminated added an additional setback that was mandatory based on the height of the building, not necessarily the use for the club. Since a club is by special permit, if you had a club that, for instance, also had alcohol sales on it or a more intensive use, the special permit always allows the planning commission to increase the amount of the setback regardless of what the text says in terms of a specific setback. In this particular case, it being a museum, we felt it was appropriate that they have the normal setback rather than this enhanced one. So thus, we were comfortable that this text amendment would work both for circumstance like this with the Germans from Russia Museum, and if you had one like a Legion Club, or not to pick on them, but another club that perhaps had longer hours of operation, more traffic coming, that type of thing, that you could increase the amount of the setback.
Okay, John.
You answered the question. I was wondering how that would affect others.
Okay, there you are. Thank you. Next item, please.
All right, next is item twenty-six, amending chapter twelve point oh eight of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parks, general rules and regulations by amending section twelve point oh eight point oh seven oh, unlawful to be in park after hours, to amending section 12.08.340 to specify that a violation of any provision of Title 12 or any rule or regulation adopted pursuant to Title 12 shall be a misdemeanor unless otherwise specifically provided.
Jeffrey Patrick, Lincoln City Attorney. This is a relatively small change in our criminal section of the code. It does not change much of how our office would approach this offense of being in the park after hours. By moving it from a misdemeanor to an infraction, though, it would have some effect on people that have been convicted of this now infraction and are applying for jobs or other related positions. A lot of times on applications, well, there's all sorts of different questionnaires. They might ask if you've been convicted of any felonies. They might say felonies or misdemeanors that involve dishonesty. Some ask any misdemeanors or any felonies. In that case, by making this an infraction, this would be something you would not have to disclose. So it can have an impact on how you fill out a questionnaire. The fact that it's an infraction does not mean that it won't show up on a criminal history check if you do a criminal history check on somebody. So it's a relatively small change, but for someone who is looking at a conviction for this, the fact that it's an infraction means that they still won't have a misdemeanor conviction.
Right.
So if someone currently is in a park after the park is closed, they would be given, they could be issued a misdemeanor?
It would be a misdemeanor under the current code.
Now, if this passes, then we have somebody in the park after hours, it would be an infraction. Could there be additional charges depending on what they were doing in the park?
And quite often there are. We don't see a lot of these, frankly, but sometimes when you do and it attracts public attention, police attention, you might see someone with open container of alcohol. Sometimes they're in a, if there's a fountain or something that might be in there, could be causing damage to public property or disturbing the peace. So there are a number of related offenses that could be charged depending upon how they're behaving.
Carl?
Thanks. So Jeff, one thing that concerns me is, I guess it could, I'm thinking of downtown parks like the new Tower Square or the new Centennial Mall, or the park next to the old City Hall building. An individual is, is in one of those facilities after hours, and is there anything that this change would do that would, would discourage them from, from leaving? I mean, I, I don't want to open the door to transients or others camping out in our, in our parks, so.
I don't think it's gonna change the effect on them. It's still an infraction. They're still gonna be ticketed. It's still a hundred dollar fine plus court costs. So it is something that they're still gonna have to deal with. My prosecution division didn't have any qualms about making this change.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call item 27, change of zone 15007, application of M&amp;W Holdings for a change from R3 residential and B2 planned neighborhood business to R4 residential on property generally located at North 14th Street and Indigo Road.
Good afternoon, Tim Gergen with Clark Anderson Partners again. What we're seeking here is a more of a transitional zoning. We're, have a segment of an old B2 zoning land that we are changing the zone to an R4 on this property delineated right here, essentially to make way for a group of duplexes and triplexes on the property. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions?
Could you describe what you think the target demographic for these units might be?
Larry and I don't know what the target demographic would be, but they're mainly three-bedroom duplexes and triplexes. The developers looking to not lease them or rent them all at a whole, but sell them individually.
Okay, thank you.
There are some similar units just to the west of this location.
Correct.
And those units have presented something of a problem to, to neighbors in terms of parking and...
Tim, you want to point that, would you point that out to us where that is?
Yeah, it's probably just, just right off to the map right here. There's a group of duplexes and triplexes called, on Turtle Creek Road.
Okay, so what, in, in this new area that you're presenting, what, what steps can be taken to try to address those issues?
We met with the neighbors before Planning Commission and have, as part of our CUP that was approved at Planning Commission, we have allotted eight additional parking stalls besides what you could park on the driveways. And we have also elongated the driveways, pushed the units as far back into the backyard as possible to give as much driveway space as possible so patrons can park in their driveways instead of on the streets.
Okay. And then also, I'm curious about, you don't have access from 14th Street, so where is the access coming from?
Correct, coming. This is the site plan of the CUP, so this is 14th Street here. So this is Indigo. People would come into Indigo and then enter in the street here. And then we've provided for possible future access to the undeveloped property to the north that would later on connect up with Morton Street.
Okay. It, it's a, they route a circuitous route to get to where you're going?
It, it is, but it's, given the parameters of the access onto arterial roadways, it's the best route we could get for this property without having an extra curb cut onto the arterial roadway.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
We have time for staff questions?
I'm sorry, yeah, staff question?
Thanks for coming, Steve. I noticed in the notes that the, the size of the lots is small, and that because of that, the frontage is mostly driveway with front doors not facing the street. And when we were going through small lot legislation in the past with the Planning Department and trying to come up with ways to facilitate development on, you know, difficult pieces of land and provide flexibility, one of the things we discussed was sort of what the frontage of houses look like on these small lots, because, among other things, concerns like safety, you want to have eyes on the street. Can you talk about the design here and what the limitations or the thought process was that led to this kind of garage-dominated front?
Sure, with the particular design that they have, typically we've had many of the townhome units be a little bit wider on the interior ones, 27 to 32 feet wide. In this particular case, they were trying to maximize the number of units because the existing zoning is B2. And so in our early comments with, and discussions with them about having the front doors facing the street as well as a window on the first floor and any windows on the second floor if they do two-story units, their concern was that they wouldn't be, they'd have to lose a unit or two to be able to do that. And in order to try to facilitate removing the B2 zoning here, since it would not have access to 14th Street, we felt that was one of the trade-offs, was to not have a standard in place on this one that would require a door facing the street. So instead, the doors come off the, the side of the garages that are serving the units.
And in terms of the zoning, there's no requirements for design standards that would prohibit this in the R4?
The R4 zoning doesn't have that as a requirement. It's been typically something that's been added as a part of a special permit for a community unit plan. So most of the other large townhome projects we have in town, that is a requirement that goes along with this specific special permit. But in this case, it isn't one that we recommended being added to it because they were trying to maximize the number of units on the site.
Okay. I think this sort of approaches the border of that, you know, sort of, we want infill and development, but we also want it to be equality and not compromise too much on the, any safety features or design standards that help maintain property values, so.
It's definitely a trade-off. The, the units to the south along Indigo Road are on wider lots, and so they do have a, a door and a window on the first floor and windows on the second floor facing the street as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve, what was the total number of, the total number dwellings?
22 is what they had on the special permit.
All right, thank you. The other discussion, next item, please.
All right, I'll call items 28 and 29 together. They are the change of zone 15008, application of Agro Corporation for a change from AG Agricultural and AGR Agricultural Residential to B5 Planned Regional Business District on property generally located at South 84th and Pine Lake, and the related use permit 140E to expand the boundary of the existing use permit by approximately 17 acres to allow an automated car wash and an approximately 210,000 square foot freestanding superstore on property at South 84th and Pine Lake.
Tim Gergen, Clark Anderson Partners. This is the last piece of the Appian Way Commercial Center Plan, Commercial Center to be left unannexed and zoned. And here we are coming forward with a automated car wash and a large retail store component. And we'd be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
That was fairly close to the vest.
I'll ask the question then. Is anybody willing to say what the large retail establishment will be?
The, the large retail establishment is still in negotiations. I can't say at this time, but I'm happy to make an announcement hopefully in the next 30 to 45 days.
So first, we have to pass it to find out what's in it?
Possibly.
Just checking.
Point that out. Tim, will you please, where that's gonna be?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is this location here. This is the Walmart, Menards, and Sam's Club here, and this is the entrance off 84th Street. So this is the car wash and then the large retail.
And that fills up that...
That would fill up the remaining corner up there.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like questions? Thank you. Staff questions? Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
That would conclude our public hearing portion. We can move into the voting session, which is only one item. Item 23, the award of the contract to the low bidder for the agreement between the City and State Department of Roads for the 70th Street Van Dorn to East Borough project introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Larry in discussion. Color roll.
Then?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Ordinance's second reading then are items 24 through 29. We have no ordinance's third reading. Resolutions on first reading are items 30 through 35. And ordinance's first reading are items 36 through 38.
Mr. Chair, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Color roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Kayla Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.